Good evening and welcome to the January 26, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting. Before we start tonight's meeting with our typical pledge allegiance to the flag and a moment of silence, it's with a heavy heart that I announce that we've lost our Assistant General Manager Bernie Cooper after half a decade of service to the town. And before I say anything else, I'd like to turn it over to the General Manager.
Thank you Chairman Plasko. I'll just read the note we put out for the community. It's with great sadness that we have to let everyone know that our friend Bernie Cooper has passed away. He leaves behind Connie and her four children, their four children, Sam, Josh, Alicia, Amelia, and her husband Michael. Bernie is the heart and soul of Norwood. He is everything we know and love about Norwood. While many of us will mourn the loss of a colleague and a dedicated public servant, I know I am among many mourning the loss of a beloved friend. Bernie and I had personally become very close friends, attached at the hip six days a week. From first thing in the morning to walking out to our cars together at night, the number of times we talked and saw each other throughout the day was probably over 100. Calls in the evening, early morning, every weekend and most holidays. During all of the storms, all of the meetings, the lunches with Tom, Bernie was always there. I'll miss his smile and his friendly attitude, his advice and his knowledge, but most of all his good nature. Bernie simply was the absolute best a human being could be. Bernie has been my rock since coming to Norwood and he was John Carroll's before that. When I spoke to John a few nights ago, he said his heart was completely broken. I think we all share in that broken hardness. We lost a wonderful person, a dedicated employee, and I have lost a best friend. Bernie means the world to so many of us and the coming days and months will be hard for all of us. To Connie, Alicia, Josh, Sam, Amelia, and Michael, we grieve with you in the loss of your husband and father. While a family always knows a person the best and closest, Bernie is such an important part of so many lives and has impacted so many people. We're grateful that you shared him with us and with Norwood. Our whole community shares in your sorrow and we hope we can comfort and strengthen you during this difficult time.
Thank you. I'd just like to add that Mr. Cooper was indeed Mr. Norwood. Everything about him was Norwood. He worked day and night, weekends. He did not know a time clock. He put in everything that was needed to make sure different items that were happening in Norwood came off smoothly. And then when that was done, he probably did 100 and a half, 200 hours a year, every year, for half a century, contributing to outside events like the Fourth of July Parade, the Norwood Day, and concerts on the car. And sometimes he was the person out front and sometimes he was in the shadows and hardly known, but he was always there making sure that everything went smooth. So we thank Connie and the family for sharing him with us. He'll never be replaced and he'll always be in our hearts. Thank you. With that, any further comments? Otherwise, we'll move to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, our first order of business is to meet with our Memorial Library Board of Trustees who have joined us. Good evening all. Meeting and a joint meeting as the appointing authorities to fill a vacancy on the Library Board of Trustees under Chapter 41, Section 11 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Before we go any further, Mr. Hall, would you like to introduce your members to us?
Yes, thank you, Plasko. I'm John Hall, the current Chairman of the Board of the Memorial Library Board of Trustees. Our Vice Chair is Marguerite Cummings, you'll see on the screen, and she's almost about to wave at you. Our Senior Trustee is Sarah Beg, and our next most senior trustee is Donna Montgomery, and the new kid for a little longer is George Michael.
Okay, thank you. So if it's all right with you, I'd just like to say that the Library Trustees have felt that they should fill this vacancy and that's why they notified us of the vacancy. They have found a gentleman who we all know and all are very familiar with his background, Mr. Joseph Greeley, who was willing to serve until April and at that time, because of his other many commitments, will not be a candidate for reelection. He's well-known to the library. He was involved with the selection of the new incoming library director and certainly as a Finance Commissioner when he served, very intricately knowledgeable about their budget, so he could do a great job for them until April. So, Mr. Hall, would you like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Greeley?
Yes, thanks. That Joseph Greeley, trustee of the Memorial Library Board of Trustees, for the remainder of this year's term.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Maloney? Sarah, Sarah, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Saying none, nomination will be closed and will take a vote. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings? Ms. Beg?
Aye.
Ms. Montgomery?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Helen?
Aye.
Florence Lane? Ms. Maloney? And the chair votes aye. So, Mr. Greeley, you are elected unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ajah from Florida. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Glad to support the nomination. I say yes.
Thank you. So it is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Greeley, and thank you for stepping forward. Anything else you'd like to say, Mr. Hall, at this time? Any of your members?
Just a thank you to the Board of Selectmen for working with us on this and we look forward to continuing to work together on all sorts of things.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to our appointment.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. So, the next item is discussion of a possible reduction of the quorum at town meeting and we are joined by Moderator Dave Hearn on the screen. My first thought was that we wouldn't need to reduce the quorum at this town meeting. With the virtual town meeting, we're probably, hopefully, going to get a large participation as some other towns have done. But we had some discussion about it, the moderator and I, and we've never done this before, so we can't be certain. And there's also a provision where if town meeting members themselves are uncomfortable with it and don't like it, then vote to not continue in the virtual meeting but go to a regular meeting, in-person meeting, that at that point, we may want to be considering the conditions and the COVID situation and might want to consider lowering the quorum. I won't speak, need to speak for Mr. Hearn, he can certainly speak for himself, but we felt that if we lowered it to the 45 as we did in November, that we would be willing to go along with that, that he would concur with the board, but it's up to the board for discussion and decision on how we should go with that. Did you want to add anything, Mr. Hearn?
No, I think you've covered it. I mean, as you and I discussed, the first order of business for the town meeting is to vote whether to hold the remote town meeting. And if, I don't think this will happen, but if the body voted not to go forward to the remote, then we would adjourn to the following Monday for an in-person meeting. And at that point, we might have some concerns about reaching the usual quorum requirement. That's why I think it's useful as a fallback for the board to consider a reduction of quorum. But I don't expect we'll need it with the remote meeting. I expect most people will vote to continue with the remote meeting.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunnehy?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question, please. This remote meeting is a new concept and what question I have is that in the event that the moderator became sick or in the event the moderator had to step down because of another reason, what is the procedure for the substitute monitor to be like in regard to a remote meeting, please?
It's basically the same as an in-person meeting. The body would elect a moderator pro temp to conduct the meeting in his absence. We have several times in the past, town meeting has gone to Mr. Riley. So we've asked Mr. Riley if he would be available to the town meeting so it chooses, and he will be, but technically, the body could choose anyone they want to be the moderator pro temp.
So who would be the person that takes the moderator's place to call upon the need for a substitute moderator?
Typically, it's the town clerk. Sometimes it's been the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, but usually, it's the town clerk.
And in the-- Mr. Chairman, if I could, I mean, normally, I announce that I'm recusing myself and ask the body to elect somebody, but you're right that it could be the town clerk who asks if there were a vacancy in the moderator's position for the purpose of calling for the vote. It hasn't been an issue in the past and I've indicated to many of the people involved in the planning for the town meeting that there are, I believe, four articles and they are grouped together in which I will step down to avoid any possible conflict of interest. One or two of them, I may be active on them. Mr. Riley has indicated he's available, but as you said, it's up to the body to decide who will act as a moderator pro temp and when we get past those.
That's the question that I have because having been a town meeting member for 50 years plus, in the, you know, past, asking Mr. Riley all the time, it was open to anyone in the body and I thought that that might be a rule. Maybe there's someone else who would want to be the substitute moderator.
Well, that will be up to town meeting, someone on the town meeting floor to make a nomination.
But with a remote meeting, that's nearly impossible, isn't it?
No, same as in-person. Would say, is there any nominations for moderator pro temp to step in and take Mr. Hearn's place? And anyone would raise their hand, be recognized to make that nomination.
Okay, thank you.
Mechanically, mechanically, I don't know if that's the right words. On the virtual meeting, there's ways to raise your hand and be recognized and speak and so forth.
So then, the person who substitutes for the moderator, asking for the new running, you know, if it's the town clerk, I think that we have to make that point clear to all of the town meeting members. Anyone else who wants to try the job is welcome to, you know, try and get elected.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, that's always been the rule and that's always how we've operated. I will say that Mr. Riley, I asked Mr. Riley to be available and to participate in the planning meetings because I knew there would be a few matters in which I couldn't participate and he has been very gracious with his time in the participation, in the training, in the planning, and in the discussion and has given a great deal of his time. The body can decide what it wants and it's also seeing him in action, so we'll leave it to the body when we get to that during the meeting. But, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to comment if I can, if this is a good time or later, about the training of the town meeting members or later, after we dispose of the quorum question.
I will recognize it, but let me dispose of the matter right before us, whether we are going to choose whether quorum or not. Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a clarifying question. So potentially, on the beginning of the first meeting, a motion could be made to not hold the meeting remotely and that would have to pass with the majority?
Majority.
Thank you.
That's a requirement under the law, that we vote on that question as the first order of business.
I assume--
It's not optional. It is required.
Mr. Hearn, I assume also that the body might go through the full evening, but if we don't finish our business, decide they don't want to continue that way and make that motion at the end of the meeting as well? Would seem--
I don't know that that's available under the statute. We might want to review that in case it becomes an issue, but the statute refers to the, and I'm looking at it now, I'm looking for the section that deals with it. Prior to taking up any business at a representative town meeting held through remote participation under this section, the town meeting members present and voting at the meeting shall vote on whether or not to commence business at the town meeting remotely by means of the chosen video or telephone conferencing platform. If the town meeting votes to continue conducting the town meeting remotely, then the town meeting shall proceed by remote participation to address the articles included in the warrant. I think that suggests that the whole meeting will then be a remote meeting until we dispose of the entire warrant. But we can ask how till there's a different opinion.
It does sound that way. Mr. Ajah, did I see your hand, sir? No.
Well, I'm glad so far.
All right. Well, could I have a motion either to keep the quorum full or to reduce it to 45?
What about another number?
Go ahead, you've got the floor.
What is a quorum? What number is a quorum?
It's a moving target. It's about 123, 123, 125. It depends on how many vacancies there are at the time of the meeting.
Approximately 125.
Move that we reduce it to 80.
Is there a second? Is there any other motion? Mr. Lane?
I'll make a motion to reduce the quorum to 45.
Is there a second? Made seconded. Anything further? Mr. Ajah?
Yes, aye.
Mrs. Dunnehy?
No.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so that motion passes 4 to 1. Mrs. Dunnehy opposed. All right, thank you. Mr. Hearn, you're up.
Our two matters. Number one, in conformance to the requirements of law, I consent, I give my consent as moderator to the reduction of the quorum to 45.
Thank you.
Well, we hope we don't need it, but just in case. The other thing I would like to point out while I put an audience out there is that report and to exhore. We have had four training sessions with town meeting members so far. We've had greater than 90 people, close to 100. A few people have attended more than one session, so the count depends upon how many duplicates there are in there, but I counted above 93. The last training session is next Monday, February 1st at 7:00 PM. And of course, town meeting is Thursday, February 4th, beginning at 6:30 PM. The link to the training session is on the town's website. That's the link for the Zoom webinar on February 1st. It's also provided to the town meeting members by regular mail. Anybody who hasn't yet gone through the training, we urge you to do so. It's not the same really as just having a meeting with friends on Zoom. There are other factors to take into account because it's a Zoom webinar. The training people have been very good at helping us, working with us, the MAPC, the Parliament Area Planning Council people, and they've done a great job. The materials they've prepared and also the way of teaching and also working with us in our planning sessions. I want to point out that the Clerk's Office told me today that there is still a number of people who have not submitted email addresses to the town Clerk's Office. If you don't, if you're a town meeting member and do not submit an email to the Clerk's Office, you will not be able to participate in the remote town meeting. If you have, if you don't have an email address or you have some difficulty with respect to not having a computer or laptop or some device that can log into the meeting and you have to have an email address to log into the meeting, please contact the Clerk's Office and they will do everything they can to work with you. But if people don't turn in, submit an email address to the Clerk's Office, they won't be able to participate in the meeting. And that's just the way that we've announced that time and time again and so it's, we've been a little over a week and we need to have that, those addresses just as soon as possible as the Clerk can send out the appropriate information for people to participate. And that's it. I hope to see all of you, if I haven't seen you already, at these training sessions. You're very valuable and all the people at home who haven't had a chance to do it yet. Next Monday, February 1st, 7:00 PM.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for--
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. I think we're a little ahead of schedule, but Mr. Ryan is with us, so I think we'll move right to our appointment with Mark Ryan, Director DPW and Town Engineer. Good evening, Mr. Ryan. Mark, you're muted.
I've only done this 100 times. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Happy New Year. I haven't seen most of you since the New Year and looking forward to 2021 being a special year for all of us. You have my report in front of you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just touch on some of them. As you drove into your meeting tonight, we do have a little bit of snow going on tonight. We'll get between one and two inches of snow, more of a nuisance. Don't anticipate plowing, but to date, we've had three snow plow operations, Mr. Chairman, seven roadway salting operations, and one snow removal operation. So we've had a pretty moderate winter, but we still have had 21 and a half inches of snow, most of it falling on December 16. Dealing a lot with mass DOT, Campanelli Companies, the Planning Board discussing advancing the traffic signals at Planton Field Brook Road and Upland Road to accommodate the housing complex up there, but in particular, the Moderna facility up there to provide safe passage for those people doing a wonderful job providing the vaccine for the country and the whole world. So we're working hard with them. Campanelli met with the Planning Board last night, or a representative did, and we're at 25% design, but we're hopeful this construction of both signals at the driveway will start sometime late summer, early fall. The actual bigger project, which is the Upland Road, Prospect Street, Fulton Street Signals for federal fiscal year '23, which would probably be calendar year '23 for all those at home, so that's still off in the distance. So we're working very hard on that, Mr. Chairman, to make sure that happens. Holiday recycling, every year since we started the single stream recycling back in October 2008, we've provided opportunity for residents to stop by the landfill all week long to drop off holiday recycling, cardboard, wrap, or tissue, Christmas trees, whatever. So once again, we did that this year. It's proven very successful, as well as the Christmas tree pickup curbside, which we do, which ended on January 15, but you can still drop them off at the landfill every Saturday from 8 to 1:30. Water department's very busy, probably seen a little action on Prospect Street between Prospect Ave and Winter Street. We're replacing water services. This past summer, we cleaned the main water main and then a lot of times, water department will fall back in and replace the old galvanized iron water pipes serving the houses. And this is in anticipation of paving Prospect Street this summer. Sewer department is busy as always, between the pluggies and cleaning out ditch basins and replacing them. Cemetery department, you'd think it'd be a slow time of the year, but they're busy all year round, Mr. Chairman, and between the burials that they deal with, in fact, tomorrow, they have five of them, so it's a very busy day tomorrow. But you have the activity that we've had, the fiscal year and calendar year in front of you and just so you know, in calendar year 2020, we had the 208 burials, which is sort of interesting. For the past 30 years, we've averaged 221 burials, so we thought there'd be a lot more, but 208 was the year to date for 2020. Paul Ranali does amazing things up there. He's always looking to do projects. There's never a project that he isn't thinking about. And the benches up there, you've probably seen them. They might have been missing when you went by, but they're out there, they sand them, they stain them, they sand the cast iron, they paint that and they look absolutely spectacular. So credit to Paul and his staff. And there's a lot of tree work to be done. And there's been a lot of tree work going on in the area adjacent to Bellevue Ave, kind of clearing that out, getting rid of a lot of dead wood, the dead trees, the dead limbs, and it's looking really attractive up there. Engineering Department is very active preparing cost estimates for this year's paving project as well as working with the Planning Board on shared street grid applications, so they're busy with that, amongst other things. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Any comments or questions? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Mr. Ryan, and Happy New Year to you too. You made mention of the single stream recycling project that began in 2008 and it reminds me that we're probably, I don't know, within maybe 12 months of having to consider a new contract on the, on trash removal. I currently am working with Waste Management and have been for many years. Is it too early for you to offer any kind of forecast as to where we might be going given the skyrocketing cost of recycling and how we might, how we might deal with that in the next contract?
So we're in year three of a five-year contract. Year four will start in July. Fortunately, you know, when we negotiated this contract between former Selectmen Howard and Selectmen Maloney, we made sure recycling costs never exceeded solid waste costs, disposal costs, and that has saved us thousands, thousands of dollars because most communities are paying more right now to collect and dispose recyclables. It's the way the market is. We've talked about this, the China sword, where all of a sudden, they cut off the market. So it's going to be a price shock in a couple of years, Mr. Maloney. I anticipate discussions will start. Mr. Mizuko's probably got a plan already to talk to Waste Management and what are their thoughts are or maybe go out to bid. We're in a position right now where it's going to be very costly, the way the forecast is going now. I will tell you, with this pandemic, we're probably up 20%, 25% as far as volume and trash and recycling volumes, just as everyone's home. Everyone's home, they're not going to work, they're clinging out there, you know, respective places. We've got a very expensive year right now, fiscal '21, trash and recycling, but I anticipate we're going to really put our heads together again and figure out what's best for the knowledge to go forward to the next contract.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. So we've got some time on that. We have another, maybe 12 months before we have to really plan a strategy, but appreciate the update on it. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunnehy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello, Mr. Ryan. A few months ago, I asked about Stratford Road and about how the gas company had taken it up. Well, the fixed Stratford Road, are you familiar with the condition of it? Of Stratford?
I am, yes, I am.
Uh-huh. So half of the road looks beautiful where they fixed it now and the other half of the road is the way that it was. So is there a way that, how do you handle situations like that? You know what I mean? It's, one side is brand new and nice now and the other side is the way that it was. Is that how it's going to be forever? I just need to know as an example, you know?
So, great question, Mrs. Dunnehy. So when utility company typically, national grid comes in, they get a street opening permit and they're required to install a permanent trench patch. In the past, they would come back after their initial work and redig the patch and it'll be three or four feet wide. For the past 12 years now that I've been director, we require them to do a larger-- For the past 12 years, now that I've been director, we require them to do a larger patch width to catch more of the road, to grind it out and then pave it. It's worked very well. I know people say, "Well, why don't they pave the whole road?" Well, we can't obligate them to do that, but they do capture quite a bit more road than they used to. And, you know, that's the unfortunate thing. So, with that said, you know, we're going forward, trying to, you know, with this, a lot of money's allocated towards paving and cleaning and lining, working constantly with National Grid, trying to make sure a lot of these projects are done so we can pave the roads and not have trenches in the road. And National Grid so far has been very agreeable to that. I'll tell you, down in the Stratford Road area this coming year, we're going to be proposing to clean and line all those water mains down there. It's quite a large section, and then the following year, we'll pave all the roads. But that's a typical trench you're going to see in most communities, Mrs. Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you. Anything further? Guess that's, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ja.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, on the Happy New Year to you as well. On your snow report, do we have any type of a number on how much we've spent or percent of the budget you've spent so far this fiscal year?
I do not have it with me, Mr. Ja. I could have that forwarded to you tomorrow, as well as the rest of the board. Absolutely.
I appreciate that. Certainly, on the, on the project, I'm not sure it's for you now, or if it's something that you'll deal with later on, but have we completed the field upgrades that were outlined in the reports 30 years ago, when you were going step-by-step and upgrading each of the fields? Are we done with that, or are there fields still to be upgraded?
No, we've taken care of all the fields. Now, it's up to us to make sure they're maintained properly.
Okay, thank you. On your cemetery numbers, when you, can you, when you show the current fiscal year-to-date numbers, can you show to the right of that the fiscal year '20 and fiscal year '19 numbers for context purposes? I don't know, like, you talked about, you know, where we're averaging, but can we have the actual numbers for those both fiscal years to the right of fiscal year '21? And I know you have the numbers, not now, but in your next report.
Of course. Yep, I think that'd be very helpful. I agree, yes.
Okay.
No problem.
My first question is, a couple of weeks ago, I think we talked with National Grid when they came looking for a particular permit, and we had put the condition that they had to pave a certain number of feet beyond where they had originally requested, and the lady, the manager that was there said she couldn't make that decision. Have you heard back from them?
I have not, but the permit that we granted them dictated they had to pave the entire width of Central Street to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Love them.
All right, I think that's it. Appreciate the report and answers to the questions. Thank you, Mr. Ryan, for joining us.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Okay.
You, too. Thank you, Mark.
So, now, we'll move on. Next item on the new business, the Massachusetts Department of Telecommunications and Cable has officially notified us that town's lease agreement with Comcast Cable Communications, Inc., will expire February 1 of 2024, and as the issuing authority, the Selectmen may begin the ascertainment process in this matter. Typically, over the years, this is every time one of the cable companies licenses come up, we have that ascertainment and negotiations and so forth handled for us by the Cable Commission. Does the Board like to forward this to the Cable Commission or take any other action? Mr. Mizuko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did speak with the Chair of the Cable Commission today. They are knee-deep in working with Verizon and will proceed, should the Board want them to, with Comcast after that. So, they are on top of it, and kudos to them for staying on top of what could be a dry topic at times.
Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a quick question. So, in the letter that we received, it makes the recommendation for a Cable Advisory Committee, but we already have one.
Correct.
They just call it a different thing.
The Cable Commission.
Okay. So, we make a formal and have a motion to forward this to the Cable Commission?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
opposed? unanimous? Thank you very much. Now, we have a very interesting report from Mark Good, our treasurer and collector, fourth quarter report of trust funds, and a lot of interesting and valuable information there. Any questions or comments on it? Mr. Ja.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I think the document has excellent explanation. It's great for transparency purposes. And in the report, it lists several funds, I think several that I have never heard of, but I'm sure they serve or have served a very good purpose. There are many, there are five of them with a value of under $1,000. Can we research, or maybe it's already known by you, Mr. Chairman, or others, can we research the continued use of these funds, and are there conditions? Do they still serve a purpose or whatever?
Sure. Mr. Mizuko.
Yes, we can certainly look into it. One of the challenges we face, like a lot of organizations, money is sometimes donated to the town for a specific purpose, and it doesn't earn a lot of interest, and 30, 40, 50 years later, you have, you know, $800 in an account that you're allowed to spend the interest from, of which ends up being a couple dollars a year. So, we do end up with some of these smaller hanger-on accounts, as you will, but we can drill down into some of them, but oftentimes, that is what happening is you've got a lot of accounts that just never had a lot of money in them.
Yeah, because of the amounts of money, Mr. Ja, I agree with you. That's probably a good idea. We take a second look and see if there's anything we could do with those.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, John.
So, we'll work with that through the general manager and the town treasurer as well. Anything else? We'll move on.
Information to file.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
unanimous? Mark Sivulinski from the Bay State Line and Spirits, 426 Walpole Street, is officially notifying the Board that they will be closing this store temporarily. The intention certainly is to reopen, but they're involved with the reconstruction of the Big Y Plaza, so the entire building's coming down, and they won't be able to be back in operation until that building's completed.
Information to file.
So, he's notifying us so that we don't believe that he's not using his, you know, unintentionally not using his license. So, take that as information and put it on file.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstention. Mrs. Donahue's abstained. Steve and Debbie Riley of Hawkeye Drive in Westwood, they submitted a letter concerned with some activities over at the Amazon site. I had forwarded that to Mr. Walsh in case it was something that, as the zoning enforcement officer, he would need to be aware of. He looked into it. He looked at the plans and also went over and did a site visit. He also checked with Conservation Agent Polly Jones, and they pretty much determined that there's nothing going on over there that is improper or anything that we would have any control over. This was a letter, I think, to the Westwood Board of Selectmen, but sent to us, so I think it might be nice if we just send the letter back with our findings and that suggests perhaps that they might contact Amazon directly about any concerns they have.
So moved.
So, second?
Yep. All in favor? Opposed? unanimous? Maselli Pastoreal is submitting an application for Clamavicular to operate the Juice Bar at 20 Broadway. Hours of operation Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and we will be closed on Sundays.
Move to approve?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lane. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
unanimous? Patrick Duchesne, Assistant Town Planner, has submitted a couple of items for us, and if you have any questions, I notice he has joined us. First item is a memo regarding the proposed CPA project for the Memorial Carol on supplement funding. Any questions on that?
Motion to support.
Ready?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
unanimous? Second is submitting a memo regarding the Sea Lopey Rich Pocket Park proposal.
Question, please?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you. It seems, I was, I mean, I love Lopey Rich with all my heart, but the question is, that's very close to the Sansone Park, one block away, you know?
Mr. Duchesne, do you like to comment on that?
And it's a beautiful place now with the basket, with the bench and everything. It's beautiful there now.
Unfortunately, we didn't get any kind of sketch or plan of what just proposed there, and we know there's a stone with a marking and a couple of benches. How would you be proposing that getting beautified?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, sorry about that. I probably should have attached the rendering created by Andy Murphy over in the Engineering Department. So, similar to the East Oil Park, this looks to make use of the shared street funding to help kind of enhance the area by adding pathways as well as additional benching. So, to Mr. Donahue's point, it is already a very beautiful area. We're just trying to make use of the existing funding to try to enhance this additional pocket park. So, obviously, we have, you know, we have the East Oil location. We would have this location. There's the Air and Dial Park, this town common. So, we're trying to kind of create a, along the Washington Street corridor, a...
An emerald necklace.
Yes, in a way, yeah. So, that's our version of that, trying to have these little areas of kind of recreation space that can help enhance the area.
Question, please. Could the funds be used, say, for example, to enhance an area on the Balch School front lawn?
Absolutely. Yeah, so that is an example that I think was in the South Norwood Master Plan as well, was trying to find a way to enhance that. With existing funding, we have close to $70,000 remaining, and that's the, that's not counting the funding that would be going towards the Pocket Park for Sea Lopey Rich. That was estimated at around $35,000 from Mark Ryan, so we would have a sizable amount of money to take over into the spring that can be used for additional purposes, especially within South Norwood. The only kind of requirement left for that is I know from Mass DOT, they want us to be able to spend all the funds before the end of fiscal year. So, going into the spring, hopefully, we'll be able to, to kind of put our heads together and come up with some new ideas and some better uses for those funds going into the warmer weather as we get ready to kind of reopen a lot of our outdoor eating, you know, for restaurants, as well as initiatives that can be done in South Norwood.
Question, please. If we don't, if we don't use the money, well, first of all, I feel badly about talking against the Lopey Rich Park because he was like a brother to my father, but in real life, if we don't use, that's beautiful there already, and we have beauty there already, and we have benches there already. We have a beautiful new park for the Sansone Memorial on the corner of East Oil, one block away. If we don't use the $35,000 there now, mothers stand waiting for their kids after school when we don't have the virus. There's a huge lawn there at Balch School. We could put benches on both sides, or we could put something else that would enhance and hold community idea. If we don't use the $35,000 now, can we hold it and use it in the spring?
Yeah, absolutely. You bring up a very good point, Mrs. Donahue. So, that is, that's a great location within South Norwood. It's kind of, you know, it's a piece of town-owned land that is already an existing green space that we could definitely enhance with additional features. So, I think that's, I think that's certainly a great idea to think about, kind of re-energizing in the spring and adding benches and maybe adding some different landscaping features.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Patrick, I think that's a good idea, too, and I agree about the, about doing a refresh down at the Balch School and perhaps, you know, tying it in with the parklets that we're planning to install down there, or maybe some other developments along that corridor. I'll support the Lopey Rich thing because I do, I do think that does need a refresh, too. It's a great spot for a little pocket park, and I think, I just, I just think it needs a, what do they call it? A makeover, makeover. Anyway.
Mrs. Donahue.
Thank you. Mr. Duchesne, there is, come to find out, Abe Shigori donated some land to the town that he wanted all the people of the town to use up by Newport. Could that money be used up by Newport to build the place where all the townspeople could use that land and enjoy the pond?
Possibly, yeah. Ideally, the shared streets funds are supposed to be kind of in areas that can both increase pedestrian access to local business areas or local downtowns, but it can, it can certainly be, it does have kind of a wide scope of uses. So, I think something in that location, which is more of a residential area, that you could look into that as well. So, it is very kind of open-ended when it comes to the exact location of utilizing these funds. So, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Ja.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, too, think it does need an upgrade there. I think at the Bond Winter in Washington, it's a great spot, and I think it complements what was done for the Sansone area. I don't think it makes it worse. I do agree with Mr. Donahue that we could do something in front of the Balch area that's along our major street that runs through Norwood. Question about that area, is that school-owned? Of course, I shouldn't say school-owned, but school-controlled property that we'd have to get the permission as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, if we're going to pursue, or Patrick, if you guys want to pursue, we need to follow that path as well. I would definitely like to see the rendering. You could send it out to the Selectmen. That way, if we, if we do approve it, probably you might have comments based on the design that you have. They might be willing to take input. That would, that would be great.
Absolutely. I can forward that to all of you tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, Patrick, the area that's town-owned, that's kind of the side yard of that first house on Winter Street, do you know what the square footage is? How much of the area is the park?
Oh, I'd have to get that number off the rendering for you. I apologize.
Okay.
It's not big.
It is a sizable piece of land for being kind of within the right-of-way. So, that was kind of the same reason why, while we chose that location, it kind of fit the same parameters as the East Oil Street location. It was just kind of a larger right-of-way that opened itself up to being evenized.
And this pocket park is from the sidewalk and the memorial stone now back? It's not, you're not trying to build out into the street area?
Nope. Yeah, it would be off the street. It would only be within the...
Okay.
Yes.
So, we have a motion made, seconded by Mr. Ja. Mr. Lane on the motion?
Oh, may I speak to the...
Yes.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Duchesne. So, just, we have funding available through the Shared Streets Program to do this project that's proposed this evening, and then also potentially a project that Mrs. Donahue is suggesting, correct?
It's looking like that, yes. So, I mean, obviously, the scope of what could be done at the lower Balch, you know, it would be dependent on the funds, but, you know, given, you know, what I've seen, you know, from estimates from Mr. Ryan and from Mr. Murphy, comparing that to the two different locations at East Oil and potentially at Pond and Winter, I think something very nice could be done at the, at the lower, at the Balch area, at Balch School. I would imagine around $30,000 plus in remaining funds, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Donahue.
Could we please postpone action on this section until we see a copy of the plan? We don't even know how many square feet are in the right-of-way.
It's up to the Board. If they defeat the motion, then we'll... Mr. Maloney?
No, you have a motion on the floor. I was going to say, we could, we could make the motion pending receipt of the, of the plan. I mean, we know the site, right?
We don't know the site. We don't know how big it is, and we don't know what shape it is.
Okay. Mr. Duchesne, what do you think?
Whatever you want to do. It's, you know, I can send it, the rendering to you tomorrow, and it can be voted on by your choosing at the next Selectmen's meeting, if you'd like.
All right. Do you want to table, or do you want to vote? Show motion?
I have no problem voting on it now, but if you want to table it, that's fine. We know what it is.
No, we don't.
Yes, we do. We do. Yes, we do, we do.
We're going to, a couple of feet, we do. All right. So, we have a motion made and seconded to approve the request for the Lopey-Rich Park, Pocket Park enhancement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to one. Mrs. Donahue opposed. Thank you, Mr. Duchesne. Now, we have Ann Phillips, National Girl Scout Service Unit Cookie Coordinator, submitting a request to use a Morel Memorial Library parking ornament, yes, when they were here, on Sunday afternoons from February 7, 2021 to March 7, 2021 for socially-distanced cookie sales. The library trustees will support this use. I don't know why it's coming here. They're in control of that property, managing that property, and they've approved it.
Still a public event at, on town property. We still run these through the, or selectmen.
Motion to approve.
Second? May I second it? Any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Cindy McGrath, Personnel Board, submitting a resignation from the Personnel Board effective May 1, 2021. Thank her for her service and for the substantial notice so that we can try to find a replacement. Anyone interested in possibly serving on the Personnel Board, they could send a letter of interest to the Selectman's Office. Technically, the appointing authority is the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Chairman of the Finance Commission, and the moderator, but for collection purposes, please send any interest to the Selectman's Office. So, with that, we'll file for his information.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Luke Reynolds, Boy Scout Troop 49, submitting a request to hold car wash on Saturday, June 5 and Saturday, June 12, 2021.
Wish to approve.
Second.
Wish to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Holly Jones, Conservation Agent, submitting for signature to the Board of Conservation Restriction under the Community Preservation Act and the Potage River Conservation Restriction, St. Street Lots.
Motion to sign.
Second?
Mr. Chairman, question though?
Yes, Mr. Ja.
Thank you. When we last talked about this...
Just for your information, too, I'm not sure what you could see there on your screen. I'm not up with this technology, but Mr. Jones is also with us if there's any questions.
Yes, I see. Hi, Holly, how are you? When we talked about this last, I had raised the possibility of making a connection for the same streets so that emergency vehicles wouldn't have to try to turn around in a dead-end street that they could somehow go through. And I think we talked about not permanently paving because that might be an issue, but we might be able to put down either some type of stone dust or whatever that would allow that to occur without violating the efforts with regards to this conservation restrictions. I just want to make sure that, from what I read, it still allows that. I just provide concurrence from Ms. Jones that that's true, and from Tony that that's true.
I could take...
Yeah, that's right. Give back, thank you. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, Holly was not with us when we started this project. We just brought on board the landscape architect to start actually designing the area, so that'll be factored into their, into their designs.
Thank you, Tony.
And the plan for the, for the park has always been to include some impermeable surface for parking and for handicap-accessible trails, and so I think that that will be fairly easy to incorporate as one of the concerns. This is substantially the same as what you discussed the last time. It's just been somewhat rearranged by the attorneys with the state.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep.
So, a motion to sign the document?
I made that motion.
You made the motion, thank you. And it was seconded by Mr. Lane. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for sticking around. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, Holly. Thanks.
So, that brings us down to Chief William Brooks III, Police Department, submitting his monthly report of activities.
Information filed.
Information filed.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. St. Catherine to Sienna Parish, 547 Washington Street, submitting their annual bingo report, which was filed with the Charitable Gaming Division of the Massachusetts State Lottery Commission.
Information filed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Rise and File, submitting a Form 500 report pursuant to Master and All Chapter 166A, Section 10. Information filed?
Looked.
So moved? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Kathy Aruda, Algonquin Gas Transmission, submitting notification to her buddies from Dover to Canton that Algonquin will be performing close interval surveys starting the week of January 25, 2021. Information filed?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Mr. Manager, anything additional this evening, sir?
Just one note. A few board members had asked me about vaccine distribution and about the process for vaccine distribution, and I just want to let everyone in the community know, we'll be putting some specific messaging out for seniors, but that it is going to be a bit of a slow process. I know that we're hearing about folks being added to phases and starting the next week or two, but folks over 75 and folks over 65 with a few comorbidities, expect that it takes several weeks before you're able to get an appointment for a vaccine. We will be doing a local clinic here in Norwood that will be available, but our capacity is limited by what the state gives us for vaccine, so we might be only doing 100 people a week. There's a site at Gillette, and there'll be one opening up in Westwood as well that will be mass sites. So, if you're out there and you're looking to go to the state's website, which is mass.gov/covidvaccinemap, to find out where you can get an appointment and to sign up, just expect that it'll take several weeks at least before you're able to get set up once your phase is allowed. So, we've been getting a lot of calls to the Board of Health and a lot of calls to the Senior Center. It's just going to take time, and again, it's not anything we have control over. If the state would ship me 30,000 doses tomorrow, we could vaccinate the whole community in five days. We are at the mercy of the state and the federal government to actually get vaccine, so there'll be a number of different entities doing vaccinations, but just expect that it will take several weeks, probably six to eight weeks, before seniors throughout the community will actually get their vaccine in a good-case scenario. And again, that's just because it's the state's rollout of the actual volume of vaccine. I think their messaging has let everyone think that it starts soon, you'll be able to get it soon. It is going to take some time before you're able to actually get a vaccine.
Question, please?
Yes, Mrs. Donahue.
How many people in Norwood have already been, received vaccine?
You know, it's impossible to tell. The state relieves, releases numbers on a statewide level. We, at the local health level, have done our first responders. We've probably gotten about 140 or 150, and we're starting our clinics this week according to the folks, according to people that are available. We don't control the supply of vaccine. There are some folks who have gotten it through the VA, some folks who have gotten it through their employer. If you are a nurse at a hospital, it's likely that you've already gotten it, and again, we don't receive that information of who gets it. We only keep track of who we've been able to distribute it to, which is mainly first responders is the only group we've been able to start in town.
And I think the reason that we were able to get that was because Mrs. Reece said that she joined up with other towns and she was able to get more, which was very smart.
So... Yes.
The question is, is it the state that controls?
Yes. We don't ultimately get to dictate how much vaccine we get, and part of it's that there's not a huge supply out there. Again, if the state shipped me 30,000 doses, we have plans in place, we could do the whole town in five days. That's not going to happen. We don't have the ability to order 5,000 or 6,000. We're told sort of what our allocation is going to be, and we put in for it, and we ask for as much as we get, but they ask us to define the population, and we're considered a smaller site. They're trying to funnel the majority of the vaccines they have to the large sites like Gillette that can do a lot of people in a day, and that's because the supply of vaccine isn't there. The state and the federal government have somewhat done the reverse of what they've planned for, for 20 years, which is mass vaccination. We're very good at mass vaccination. What we're not good at is, as vaccine drips in and we get maybe 100 doses a week, it's okay, well, we've got to open our clinic, and everyone in the current phases, you've got first responders, you've got healthcare workers, you've got public safety folks, you've got certain doctors' offices. I mean, our supply is limited by what the state will give us, and we're not allowed to just, if I could get 1,000 doses a day, I could do 1,000 people a day. So, we're limited in what the state allows us, and if you read the governor's messaging, what they're basically doing is throwing their hands up and saying, we're going to open it up to everyone, but don't expect all the sites to have vaccine because they're then in turn blaming the federal government, so...
Mr. Manager, when, is, does the state give the vaccine control to the Board of Health?
They do not. In most cases, mass vaccination plans called on local public health being involved. We're simply one entity asking the state. We're competing with large hospitals, with private vendors for our allocation. The state makes a determination as to what your allocation is.
But say, when they give us the allocation...
Yep.
Who makes the decision? Who do they give it to?
It does go to the local Board of Health.
That's what I just said.
Correct, yes.
So, it does go to the Board of Health?
Yes.
And so then, when will the Board of Health, like, say, tell the doctors, we have some vaccine?
They're already in the process of doing it, and we've already been reaching out to different organizations that are in what phases are allowed by the state.
For example?
For example, the Board of Health has spent the last couple of days reaching out to small doctors' offices in town, letting them know that they can sign up at one of our clinics, which are specific for those healthcare workers.
So, if a person wants to get some vaccine, they should contact their own doctor?
No, that's not, that's not what we're saying at all. The state has a framework of three phases, and you have to see where you fall in one of those phases, and you won't be eligible to get the vaccine until that phase hits. Once that happens, you need to go on the state's website, and we understand there's a problem that not everyone can do that, but this is how the state's chosen to do it, and we can't control it. And that map on the state's website lists all the different sites you can get a vaccine at. Now, it'll tell you if that site is a closed site, it'll tell you if it's sort of a drive-up site, it'll tell you if it's a mass site to expect a lot of people, or if it's a closed local clinic just for a specific population. So, that map will determine where you can go, and then where you fall on that chart is when you'll be able to sign up, and you will have to provide a letter of validation that you're in that group. So, for instance, if I tried to sign up, one 75, people 75 and older are eligible, I obviously can't provide proof that I'm 75 or older because I'm not, I wouldn't be able to get the vaccine.
So, once you reach the phase...
Yep.
And you're in the phase, then you don't have a computer.
So, if you don't have a computer or a smartphone, you can contact the Senior Center. They will take a limited number of names, but that's really for homebound seniors who have no technology, no ability to go on a computer. If we were to get 1,000 calls, we would have to shut it down and not be able to do it.
But what if you're not a senior, and you want to know?
If you're not a senior and you don't, so it's all on the website. If you're not a senior and you don't have several comorbidities, you are likely not going to get vaccinated for several months. All the information is on the state's website. They have chosen to only release the information and put it out there that way.
Will we provide any service to those who live in the town, who are not seniors, who do meet, when it comes time, that do meet the category? What service can we provide to them?
So, I'm not sure what service you're referring to. Will they be able to get vaccinated at either our local clinic or one of the other regional ones? The answer is yes.
But how will they know?
It's, it's on the website that the state put out there, and they're putting it out throughout all of their, all of their media. I mean, again, if you don't like that solution, I would suggest contacting the governor's office because we're at their mercy. We don't control when we get vaccine, we don't control how they've chosen to get the information out. I think they're doing a disservice with a poor rollout, but we can only live with what they give us and what they direct.
Throughout this crisis, I think that you have done a great job caring for those who are involved in this situation, and I was hoping we could put on our thinking caps and think of a way that you have the greeter at the town hall, maybe there, and you had a number for people could call, maybe we could give them that information through the number that you have.
We certainly could. You can always call us for information. The challenge is going to be if we, so if we did a robocall and called everyone in town tomorrow, some people will not be able to get the vaccine for three to four months, if not longer. Some people may not be able to get it for six months, so it's a challenge of putting a lot of information out there and overwhelming the number of people calling when it's actually a small population able to get it, and we don't know what amounts of not only vaccine we're going to get shipped, but other states are going to get shipped. The state has come out and said they anticipate shortages at some of their mass sites. There's just not enough vaccine out there. If you want, sort of, my analysis of how the state has not necessarily done this great is that they're trying to get so much vaccine out there early that they're not waiting until they have a good stockpile, and that has to do with production issues all over the country. So, instead of doing what you would normally do, which is wait until you can distribute it to just about everyone, they're trying to get early vaccine out, which sounds good, but you're going to run into supply chains down the issue, down the road. The state has now added folks 65 and above to a phase that starts in two weeks. There is not enough vaccine for everyone to get done in a short period of time, so it's, it's going to be very rationed, it's going to be very frustrating for people, and I appreciate that frustration. I wish, again, if I could, if I could hijack a truck and vaccinate everyone in town, I'd do it tomorrow, honest to God, I would. But you're going to have sites that might be able to take 200 people a day and 5,000 call. So, it's just, I need everyone's patience. It is just going to take several months for this to roll out, and we will continue to get information out there, but if anyone's worried about missing the opportunity, the likelihood is you could start calling every single day and still not get vaccinated for months, especially if, at our local clinic in Norwood, if we're getting 100 doses a week and I can only do 100 people a week, I might get 5,000 calls a week. So, you start extrapolating that out, and you're saying it's, as they've said, July or August before, people who don't meet any of the current phases get it, are able to get a vaccine. And I know that's unfortunate, but it's, it's the beginning right now, not the end. It's not even the middle, it's the beginning of the beginning. So, more information will come out, but expect it's going to be several months before a majority of people are able to get a shot. Here and there, you're going to get some people who are able to get it. We, like most organizations, nobody wastes a shot. If you have nine, 10 doses and you get nine people in, we're going to find somebody for that 10th dose, so we're committed to not wasting what we get. We just don't even have control over what we actually get. So, I know, I agree with you, it is frustrating. We wish there was better and more clear information out there. The best thing we can tell everyone is patience. There's not going to be a whole lot of vaccine going out in the next couple of weeks, so I don't want anyone to feel like they're missing that, that opportunity to get it. It's just going to take a lot of time to get anything done, unfortunately.
Everyone understands that that's the case. My point is that I hope that we will provide the service to the residents of the town of Norwood, that if they use that telephone number, if they, if they follow TV and TV says, okay, people 50 years old can get it, if they call up, that we will be able to tell them, help them, okay?
Of course, absolutely.
That's my point.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Mazurko?
No, sir, that is all.
Any, anyone else? Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How are we doing with the hospital?
Mr. Plasko and I had a meeting with the hospital this afternoon. Would you like me to take that, Mr. Plasko? Would you like to?
Well, all I can say is they swore us to secrecy. They're a private organization. They don't have to come out publicly and discuss anything. They have corporate reasons why they don't feel they can say much at this time, so I don't have a lot of details. At the end of the meeting, though, we kept pressuring them for some information, for some help with just what's going to be happening, and the best we could get out of them is to expect that they are fully committed to coming back to Norwood Hospital, to the town of Norwood, and that they will likely have some significant announcements late March or April. But in between, it's blackout, they're not saying anything.
So that's very wonderful information, that they're planning to stay. I'd like to ask my fellow board members how you feel about this idea. It's been brought up, that what if we got a committee of citizens and asked if the committee of citizens could meet with the hospital, and ask the hospital, you know, to make sure that they stay, and ask them, tell them how much we want them to stay?
Well, you could always do that, but I don't think, at this point, they sound like they're ready to have those kind of meetings. They have told us, I think, as much as they're going to tell us, we pressured them for information, so I don't think that's really going to go anywhere. They know, we've explained to them very well. Sal, the local president, has plenty of input from local people, who he passes that along to them, and they are going to, as I said, make a corporate decision on just what they're going to do, but they are telling us that they are committed to coming, so we don't need to convince them to come at this point. That's their party line, that they are coming. It's just going to take a while, and for corporate reasons, they are not going to tell us anymore before April.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks.
Mr. Ja? I'm sorry. Wait a minute, Mr. Ja, wait a minute, did you have a follow-up?
I had one more comment. I just, you know, I always talk about the town of Norwood being all about the people of Norwood, and recently, we lost Mrs. Betty Jumper, and she is a perfect example of who helped build the town of Norwood. She came to Norwood, she had a wonderful family, she had her own business, she helped out all around different organizations, and I just couldn't let the day go by without mentioning her. Also, about Bernie Cooper. Bernie Cooper, I didn't say anything earlier because I wanted to mention his family. Yes, he had the wonderful wife, Connie, and the four kids, but he also had people who loved him and cared for him. When he started out, Brenda Babel was at the switchboard, Inez Galazi was the manager's aide, then later on, we had Virginia Cardilli at the switchboard, and we had Betty Kulik as the manager's aide, and when all of this happened, Mr. Carroll, Mr. Mazuko, was kind enough to give Mr. Carroll the call. Mr. Carroll, he's in his 90s, he called up Florida, he told Betty Kulik, Betty Kulik the same night called Virginia Cardilli and told her, this is about the town hall family, this is about people who love the town of Norwood, and he was really a very, very wonderful person, and I'm very sorry to lose him.
Thank you. Mr. Ja.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to follow up to Helen's question, and you answered. Is the hospital aware of the proposed zoning by law changes that are coming up that we would hope benefit them?
Yes.
And do they give you any reaction that you can share with us that they're very supportive, or that we have gone far enough, anything that you can tell us?
They're very happy that the town is being proactive. They said that in most cases, when a situation like this happens, that's something that happens well down the road, and that they're in a complex situation, but they're very appreciative that the town is being very proactive in getting this done now, and that will speed up their planning once they're able to actually move forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Maloney?
Just, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your remarks at the beginning of the meeting about Mr. Cooper and those of Mr. Mazuko as well, they were heartfelt, and I know that we all share your sentiments. For my own part, I don't think how many people realize, I don't think many people realize how important Bernie Cooper was to the running of the town. It's smooth running inside of town hall and out. He was the go-to guy on things like the GIC, Employee Insurance, Capital Planning Matters, OPEB, other employee benefits. He was a great guy to work with, he was always persistent but respectful, and I can't tell you how many times, Mr. Chairman, it was a matter of Bernie would propose an ideas, well, that's a silly idea, Bernie, but he would just stay with it, and he would just ask, well, let me just explain this, and after 10 minutes of a conversation, you know that Bernie's got a great idea, what a great idea that is, I'm glad I thought of it. And so it's a great loss personally, but it's also a great loss to the town. He really, he was a font of institutional knowledge, and he understood the spirit of collegiality in the things that we try to accomplish around here, and that's probably why, he's one of the big reasons why we don't have the drama that a lot of towns have in their town halls. He would be very much missed personally, and as an employee, and as a friend, and colleague. So, but you guys, your remarks were terrific, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Lane?
I agree, everyone, it's, you know, I haven't known Bernie for that long, but just a totally selfless individual, absolutely no ego, and just a great asset to the town, so he'll be missed.
Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. Fellow board members, our chairman recently had a very, very important birthday, and